Good evening, everyone. Welcome to 2015, starting the new year off right. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, cable, vision, Channel 118, FiOS Verizon, Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. Meeting was scheduled for this evening, Tuesday, January 6, 2015. The Board will take formal action on agenda items. Mr. Mara?
The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that active recording does not interfere with the business of the public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you, Mr. Mara. Roll call, please, for this evening.
Borsili?
Here.
De Prima?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Mangan?
Here.
Singh?
Here.
Silikowski?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Andriani?
Here.
Quorum exists.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dunn did call me earlier. He is having a bout with the flu, and he apologizes, and he said that he be sure to know that he will be at subsequent meetings from here on in, sitting out with the public, and he's sorry that he can't make it this evening. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you wouldn't mind, remain standing, please. We always seem to have more than our fair share of memoriam that we look for, for a moment of silence. This one touches a lot of people in the Old Bridge community. So, in memory, the Board would like to acknowledge the untimely death of Jessica LaNegro Uvegas, who was a chara schoolteacher, a SOC cheer coach, Old Bridge resident, and student through the Old Bridge School System, and express our deepest sympathy to her family and friends and the entire community. May we please have a moment? At this point in time, we will be swearing in our new electees. Is that correct, Mr. Mara? So, I have to vacate the chair, and you will now take over?
Yeah, but you can stay there.
I don't have to physically vacate the chair?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. The process that I will follow tonight is that I will first announce the winners, or the top three vote-getters, of the November 4, 2014 election. Then individually, I will swear new Board members and returning Board members at the podium. After that, the new Board will be constituted, and we'll do a separate roll call vote for them. Without objection by any of the Board members, I'd like to move up into the agenda, the hearing of the residents, before I start taking nominations for the Board President. At that point, the Board President will be voted on, one selected, and then the Board President will reassume the chair and take nominations for the Board Vice President. So first, Mr. Frank Weber received 3,306 votes for a three-year term. Donna Andriani received 3,282 votes, and Ms. Kelly Ellis-Foster received 3,151 votes. So, Mr. Weber, would you kindly go to the podium? And if you'd like to bring your family members, you are welcome to. Okay, so please repeat after me.
Can I just read it all?
Oh, sure.
I, Frank Weber, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state, under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Frank Weber, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of a member of a Board of Education, that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to law and/or disqualified from membership due to conviction of any crime or offense as listed by law, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I, Donna Andriani, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state, under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Donna Andriani, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to law or disqualified from membership due to conviction of any crime or offense as stated by law, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Ready? Okay. I, Kelly Ellis-Foster, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States of this state, under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Kelly Ellis-Foster, do solemnly swear or affirm that I possess the qualifications described by law for the office of member of the Board of Education, that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to law or disqualified from membership due to conviction of any crime or offense as listed by law, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties that the office according to the best of my ability, so help
Congratulations to all the new, or re-elected Board members. The next item will be roll call of the newly constituted Board. Donna Andriani?
Here.
Kevin Borsili?
Here.
Sal De Prima?
Here.
Kelly Ellis-Foster?
Here.
Annette Hoppman?
Here.
Nancy Mangan?
Here.
Baldwinder Singh?
Here.
Matt Silikowski?
Here.
And Frank Weber?
Here.
The quorum exists. Now, without objection, I would like to invite the public up to make any comments on the prospective Board President. By the public, I'm sorry. No comments? Okay. At this point, I will take nominations for the Board President.
I'd like to nominate Matt Silikowski.
Any others?
I'd like to nominate Donna Andriani.
Yes, I would like to nominate Kevin.
Do we have a second? Excuse me. Do we have a second on Mrs. Andriani?
I would like to nominate Kevin Borsili.
Any others?
I would like to nominate Sal De Prima.
Any other nominations? Okay, so we will begin to vote. For Matt Silikowski, for President, Donna Andriani?
I'll vote yes.
Kevin Borsili?
Yes.
Sal De Prima?
No.
Kelly Ellis-Foster?
No.
Annette Hoppman?
Yes.
Nancy Mangan?
No.
Baldwinder Singh?
Yes.
Matt Silikowski? Frank Weber? The vote for Matt Silikowski?
Yes.
Is five-three. Six-three. The second nomination was for Donna Andriani. Sal De Prima?
Yes.
Kelly Ellis-Foster?
Yes.
Annette Hoppman?
Yes.
Nancy Mangan?
Yes.
Baldwinder Singh?
No.
Matt Silikowski?
Pass.
Frank Weber?
No.
Donna Andriani?
Yes.
Kevin Borsili?
No.
The vote was five to three. I'm sorry. Matt Silikowski?
No.
The vote was five to four. For Kevin Borsili? Kelly Ellis-Foster?
No.
Annette Hoppman?
No.
Nancy Mangan?
Yes.
Baldwinder Singh?
Yes.
Matt Silikowski?
Yes.
Frank Weber?
Yes.
Donna Andriani?
No.
Kevin Borsili?
Yes.
Sal De Prima? The vote for Kevin Borsili is five-four. For Sal De Prima? Annette Hoppman?
Yes.
Nancy Mangan?
No.
Baldwinder Singh?
No.
Matt Silikowski?
I'll pass again on this one.
Frank Weber?
No.
Donna Andriani?
Yes.
Kevin Borsili?
No.
Sal De Prima?
Yes.
Kelly Ellis-Foster?
Yes.
Matt Silikowski?
No.
Okay, for Sal De Prima, it was four to five. Four yeses, five nos. Congratulations to Matt Silikowski, the new President of the Old Bridge Board of Education. And Mr. Silikowski should assume the chair.
I have one question. Where, these papers that I've been signing, are they for me to finish, or does Matt complete the signatures now on all of these papers?
We'll have Matt sign underneath.
Okay, just checking.
Okay, I would like to take nominations for Vice President.
I'd like to nominate Kevin Borsili.
Okay, we'll start off with Mr. Kevin Borsili. Okay, Donna Andriani?
I'll take the first one.
Oh, you'll take that?
Nancy Mangan? This is for Kevin Borsili.
Yes.
Baldwinder Singh?
Yes.
Matt Silikowski?
Yes.
Frank Weber?
Yes.
Donna Andriani?
No.
Kevin Borsili?
Yes.
Sal De Prima?
No.
Kelly Ellis-Foster?
No.
Annette Hoppman?
No.
The vote is five-four. Five yeses, four nos. For Sal De Prima, Baldwinder Singh? Matt Silikowski?
No.
Frank Weber?
No.
Donna Andriani?
Yes.
Kevin Borsili?
No.
Sal De Prima?
Yes.
Kelly Ellis-Foster?
Yes.
Annette Hoppman? Nancy Mangan?
No.
For Sal De Prima, there are four yeses and five nos.
Sorry. And Kevin, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Any hearing from the residents? Anybody like to say anything? Okay, can I get a motion to move Finance 1 through 3, please?
Mangan will move.
Thank you. Ms. Mangan?
Andriani.
And Ms. Hoppman will second it. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Andriani?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Ellis-Foster?
Yes.
Hoppman?
Yes.
Mangan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Movements 1 through 3, pass.
Okay, we're going to move on to Roman numeral 12, Supplies, Equipment, and Services. One through, just one. Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Mangan will move.
Thank you.
Borsili will second.
And Mr. Borsili, second it. I'll get the hang of it. Any discussion from the public? No? Thank you.
Andriani?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Ellis-Foster?
Yes.
Hoppman?
Yes.
Mangan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Resolution, one passes.
Roman numeral number 13. Unlike Donna, I could read Roman numerals. Board Secretary at Board Business, 1 through, 1 through 5. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Andriani will second.
And Ms. Andriani will. Okay, any comments from the public? No, thank you.
Well, Mr. Silikowski, I need, it's required that I read the school ethics code at this point and then open up to discussion. Okay? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mara.
The following is the Code of Ethics that all school Board members must follow in their, as they conduct school business. In accordance with NJSA 18A:12-24.1, every Board member will abide by the following Code of Ethics. The Board member will, number one, uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. Number two, make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. Number three, confine his or her Board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and help to frame policy and plans only after the Board has consulted with those who will be affected by them. Number four, carry out his or her responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with fellow Board members, ensure that they are well-run. Number five, recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the Board. Number six, refuse to surrender his or her independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. Seven, hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, he, she will provide accurate information, and in concert with fellow Board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school. Number eight, vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the Chief School Administrative Officer. Number nine, support and protect school personnel in the proper performance of their duties. And finally, number 10, refer all complaints to the Chief School Officer and act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative resolution. Thank you, Mr. President, and I suggest if there are any questions or comments that the Board would like to make, direct them to Mr. Roberts, please.
All right, any discussion? No? Any comments from the public? No? Thank you.
Matt, I'd like to discuss number three on the Board Goals. I sent an email today, and I know it was very late, so I apologize for that, but I just think that B and C under three need to be expanded a little bit because I think that they're very vague as goals. Review our committee structure to increase our governance effectiveness and efficiency. I'd like to, you know, I remember when we were having this discussion, it was not just to review it, but to ensure that we have and we implement the best possible committee structure to move this district forward. And for C, it's very, very vague. Develop an annual evaluation calendar. Well, you know, we could sit down at one meeting and just kind of develop a calendar, but that's really not going to mean anything unless we really hold ourselves to those dates. And I think that when we do our Board evaluation at the end of the year, we should hold ourselves accountable if we miss those dates because we have missed them, and I'm part of that. I'm part of this Board, and we've done that together as a team, and I think that that negatively affects the way that the administration, as well as our Board, can together complete our goals. So, I just think it needs a little bit more detail so that when we do grade ourselves on our next appraisal, that we are actually truly answering to what we need to be doing.
Thank you, Mr. Borsili.
I would like, I would just like to add that I agree with Kevin on the development of the calendar, and I would also like to see it expanded because the calendar is in effect every year, but it was in effect for 2014, and yet the Board didn't meet its goals for self-evaluation or chief school administrator evaluation in accordance with those timelines. And this is an important year, as this is, this Board will be determining the renewal of this superintendent. So, his evaluation is very important. So, I just would like to second that.
Thank you, Ms. Mangan.
I would rather than second that, I mean, that's fine. I would rather amend it at this point, and recognizing that we have the budgetary process to go through in the very short-term months coming, which, and again, we're only setting the dates to the evaluation calendar. We're not necessarily saying, if we set a date on May 1st for whatever the date is, we still have the time to accomplish the evaluation process. I'd like to set a date for, which certainly could be subject to change, for that we have it in place by May 1st at some point. That would be both things, to review the committee structures and to develop evaluation calendars, and that would be my amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Weber.
Mr. Silikowski, 3C with the annual evaluation calendar, Ms. Gwen Thornton did include a very general one in our packet when we had our meeting. Retreat, our evaluation. I think that that at least might provide a framework for us, and it's put out by month by month. So, what we should do in January, February, March, et cetera. So, maybe just as we put the goals in here, maybe that might be something we can put on our January agenda or February 1 as we go forward, or at least, again, use that as a framework and add our own and tweak it to what we need.
I agree with you, Donna. Thank you very much, and I will reach out to Gwen Thornton.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For a second. For Frank's amendment.
Right.
What is the wording for that again?
Frank, correct me if I'm wrong here, but it would be develop an annual evaluation calendar on or before May 1st, 2015?
Also review our committee structures on or before May 1st.
Okay. Okay, so we need a second for that. Is there any second?
I'll send it.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. Right. Okay, Mr. Mara, roll call.
This is a roll call for the amendment to item 3C.
Beency. What that is, so we, so the exact verbiage changed for both of them? Is there a verbiage change for both of them or just one? That's why I just wasn't sure. Just wanted to make sure.
For Beency.
Okay. And are they both just effective May 1st, or was there a different effective date?
On or before May 1st.
On or before.
So, for an amendment to 3B and 3C, first motion was by Mr. Weber, seconded by Mr. Singh. Andriani?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Ellis-Foster?
Yes.
Hoppman?
Yes.
Mangan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Nine oh, a first grade vote, I love it.
Yes.
So the amendment to three B and C passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, I guess we have to move, we, no, we moved that already, didn't we? Okay, we, hold on. One through, one through five.
Okay, so just for clarification, it's one through five, which includes amended three A, three B and three C. Andriani.
Yes.
Borselli.
Yes.
Di Prima.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Hopman.
Yes.
Mongan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Selikowski.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Resolutions pass.
Thank you. Okay, number fourteen, Roman numeral, a hearing of residents, any school district issues? From the public? No? Thank you. Okay, good of the order. Would anybody like to say anything?
Sure, you want to start down this end?
This is for the board, yes.
Sure, okay. I'd just like to welcome Ms. Ellis Foster to the board. Looking forward to a good year, working with all of my colleagues. I want to thank Mr. Dunn for his time on the board. Sure he's watching at home. He's put in a lot of time, a lot of commitment with this position as he does with all of his volunteer positions, and I know that he will continue to work hard for Old Bridge. So thank you, Mr. Dunn, for all that you've done.
Thank you, Mr. Borselli. Anybody else? Ms. Foster?
Thank you. I think first I would just, I want to just thank my family who were here. Half of them left or they're back actually over the auditorium here in school. But thank them for letting me do this. I think they're okay that I'm not home cooking. I think they're all right with that. But they have supported me and everything, and actually usually they're right there by my side, so I appreciate that. I congratulate Mr. Borselli and Mr. Selikowski. I look forward to working with everybody, I think, I agree, I hope it's a good year. I think it's a great board. Looking forward to those I know, those I don't know as well, continue to get to know better and work for, for the good of the district. Again, I agree, I'm sure Mr. Dunn is watching at home, and I thank him, and I hope I can serve as much integrity and passion as he has. And then I just want to give a shout out for something that actually is going on over the auditorium right now, it's kind of cool. We have our high school jazz band, Cloud Nine, is getting a donation from an organization in town called the Old Bridge Militia Foundation, which is a bunch of heavy metal enthusiasts and people who used to play and still do play. And they're donating a bunch of equipment to Cloud Nine, so it's a great thing that sees a community and the school kind of working together. So just looking forward to more of that great stuff this year. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Foster, very well put. Anybody else?
I'll go if we're not going in order. First off, Mr. Selikowski, Mr. Borselli, congratulations. Look forward to working with you guys and continuing what we've been doing. Donna and Frank, congratulations on your reelections, welcome back. Thank you for your guidance in the first two years of my seating here. You know, learned a lot from everybody. We've done a lot, and we have still a lot, long way to go. Rich, if you're watching, thank you also for everything. I know you're going to still be a part of this community. Thank you for your guidance and expertise in, again, in my first two years. And of course, Kelly, welcome aboard. Through various school events, I've gotten to know Mrs. Ellis Foster, and I know you will bring a wealth of knowledge and information to the board. Just a little side note on the Cloud Nine donation, there's also going to be a small monetary donation tomorrow from when they perform for the CVNA bonfire. Not much, but keeping our word. And just to reiterate, Mrs. Andriani started the meeting. My thoughts, prayers, and support go out to the La Negro Uvegas family. It was a terrible, it's horrible when you lose anybody. It's worse when you lose somebody so young, and it's even worse when you lose one of our own. The amount of love, support, and respect that was shown at the wake was just, it was Old Bridge proud. I hate to use that term with such a bad thing, but the people that showed up and the love that was shown for that family was amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Di Prima. Anyone else?
Yes. I too would also like to thank Richard Dunn for his service to the board. I worked with him not only as a board member, but as a member of the administration, and I can attest to the fact that he truly had a love for, has a love for the district, and I know he will keep active and continue to serve where he can. And I'd like to congratulate Frank and Donna for reelection. I know your heart is in the right place, and you want to do well and make the district go forward. And I'd like to congratulate Matt for becoming president of the board. And for Kevin, vice president, it'll be a good year. And I'd like to also thank Donna and Sal for their service this past year as president and vice president. I know it's not an easy job, and you're out a lot of nights away from your family and dealing with the agreements and disagreements. This board is very good at agreeing not to disagree or agreeing to disagree, but we all go forward and looking forward to a very good, productive, happy, healthy year. And as Mr. Di Prima mentioned, we just, as a community, had a very sad event, and it really is something to see how this community comes together and the outpouring, closing down of roads and expression of sympathy and support for a family in its time of loss is, is just unbelievable. And it kind of puts things into perspective as you go about your daily life, to lose someone at thirty-four years of age, a woman teacher who graduated with my daughter. And I can't imagine continuing, you know, if you lose a child, but my thoughts and prayers are with that family. So let's all wish for a happy, healthy, better 2015.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. Anyone else?
Yes, I have a few words. Thank you very much for allowing me to serve. I learned a lot as, as president over the last term, and I'm looking forward to having a progressive board. Mr. Sididino continues to put out information about the wonderful things that are happening in Old Bridge. We have a, another school who won a phenomenal accolade, and I'm sure that will all be forthcoming with our public relations and in our agenda for, for next week. In the meantime, thank you very much, Mr. Dunn. Regardless of what anybody says, you have been very passionate about your commitment to the board and to the children of Old Bridge, and I'd like to thank you for your service. With that, Ms. Foster, you also have a passion and affinity for the children of the district, and it's very nice to have you on board. Congratulations to our new officials, Mr. Selikowski, Mr. Borselli. I hope you have a good as year as I had, and hopefully we have some good things and we have a joyous and healthy 2015 for everyone concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andriani. Anyone else?
Yes, I'd like to thank Rich Dunn for his service to the community and to this board for the past three years, and I wish him well. I'd also like to congratulate Kelly Ellis Foster on her election, Donna on her reelection, and Matt and Kevin on their election. And I look forward to a very productive 2015. Hopefully, we can work as a cohesive board and continue the progress that's been made.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Anyone else?
The sudden demise of Jessica was like really saddening news for the whole community. And my heart goes to those people who were very near and dear to her. For them, this world may not look the same as it was when she was here. So God bless her soul. And Old Bridge is a nice town, and it expects and deserves a better school system. So let's hope that with the due.